Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children and Family Services Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish there is a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and requires standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, I want now to take a roll call for the minute. I would ask that members confirm their presence when I call their name. Convener.
Present.
Councillor Alexander.
Evening, I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
Present.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor Elmatcliffe.
Present.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Rome.
Good evening, present.
Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
Hi, yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Apologies have been received for councillor Crookshank. Councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
I'm present.
Councillor Scullen.
Present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Creighton.
Present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Mrs McBean.
Present.
Thank you. Mrs Lake. Almark is absent. Mr Abu Bakar.
Present.
Mr Baxter.
Mr Baxter sends his apologies.
Thank you. Ms Barclay.
Present.
Mrs Javid.
Present.
Mr Anderson McGinnis. Almark is absent. And Miss Cork. Almark is absent. And that concludes the roll call.
Thank you, Elaine. Can we just move on now to the first item of business, please?
Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Okay, I'm not seeing Andy indicating.
Thank you, convener. There being no declarations takes us to item two, retaining reserved places in schools from 2023-2024.
Okay, so this is the annual report to committee regarding reserved places. Just see if Andy has any questions or any comments to make. Councillor Duncan.
Yeah, convener, just a quick one. I hope with the regard to the increase in reserved places at Grove Academy. My question really is just that if things change during an academic year for any reason, is there any kind of flexibility, any sort of wiggle room to, if necessary, increase the places?
Sorry, I tried to get myself off mute there. I'm not hundred percent sure what you mean by things changes. You want me to clarify and then I'll bring off.
John, just really, I mean, I'm trying, I mean, nobody's got a crystal ball. So what I'm getting at is if the number of places allocated transpire to be insufficient, is there the possibility to do anything about that? That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, no problem. I'll pass over to Mrs May. I think I might just pass over to Mr Fleming, but Mrs May, I'll pass to you first.
Okay, thank you, convener, and thanks for the question, councillor Duncan. We do review this on an annual basis, so it's about gathering that data over the year to see if we do need to change them. And as you can see, we've increased the places significantly in Grove this year. And so we hope through the intelligence and data we gather that we get it as right as we possibly can. But we will always keep, you know, keep our priority one pupils on waiting lists as well. If there's more than needed in terms of the spaces we've kept and we would, you know, keep them on a waiting list. So as soon as the space becomes available, then they can get into their priority one school. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, no, thanks for that. I think it kind of does. I mean, none of us can be absolutely one hundred percent certain what the future holds. But I think your explanation about waiting lists and stuff is helpful. Thanks.
No, thank you, councillor Duncan. Councillor Creighton.
Thank you, convener. Can I ask officers how they calculated the significant increases in reserved places for Blackness Primary School and Harst Academy? And there's an increase of seven at Blackness and six at Harst. I do appreciate that the previous numbers were insufficient. But how can officers be assured and satisfied that the new total numbers are accurate? Just for ensuring if a people moves into that caption area, will they get a place in that next academic year?
Okay, thank you, councillor Creighton. Again, I'll just pass over to Mrs May.
Thank you again for the question. Thanks, convener. This time I will ask our head of education to give a fuller answer on that particular question. Thank you. I'll ask Paul Fleming to answer that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Creighton. I think as Mrs May said in the answer to the first question, we base this on the data over the years. So the amount of young people who have come into the area over a period of time, not just on the year, as well as the population in that school at any given time and indeed in every year group. So I think indeed as councillor Duncan references, we don't have a magic ball, but certainly is it not a made up number and is based on the data that we have and on our experience of who comes in, generally comes into the area and who visits and how many people are in each year group. So we're fairly satisfied that this leaves enough reserved places based on what has happened previously. And of course, at any one time, there can be an influx of numbers, whilst also allowing other people parental choice as well to leave that flexibility for parental choice, which is really important too. So we hopefully have got the balance right, hence the reason for the change this year, to add some additional capacities to these two schools you referenced, councillor Creighton.
Okay, hope that answers your question, councillor Creighton. Yep. Okay. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay. Okay, Elaine, can we move on to the next item, please?
Thank you, convener. Items three, progress, achievement of curriculum for excellence levels 2021-2022.
Okay, Bailey McPherson, I see you've got a question, so I'll come to you now.
Thanks very much, convener. I have to say there's a lot of really positive information in this and grateful to the officers, not just for the information, not just for the hard work of officers in the department and staff, our teaching staff and all support staff in our schools across the city, but also for the well-presented report. I think it is well-presented and easy to read. My question's really around the information in five point five on page seventeen in relation to literacy. If I could even say the word, literacy achievement for those pupils living in the least, sorry, the most deprived quartiles compared to those in the most, sorry, the least deprived quartiles. And it would appear, as the report alludes to, in relation to literacy and to a slightly lesser extent, numeracy, we still have a significant gap around twenty percentage points. There was a, it was less than seventeen points in 2016-17, but it's now sitting what appears to be fairly stubbornly around twenty points. And it's not a COVID thing as such, because that state of affairs was the case in seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen and so on. I'd just be grateful. I know there's a lot of work goes on to try to narrow the attainment gap. And obviously, we want to see all our pupils, no matter which quartile they come from, we want to see all our pupils, you know, attain their very best in both literacy and numeracy going forward. Now, I would just really like officers to give some assurance that every effort is being made to try to close that gap as far as is possible.
Okay, thank you, Bailey McPherson. I'll pass over to Mrs May in the first instance.
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Bailey McPherson, for your positive comments on the report and the, and are trying to always improve the presentation of the report. So thanks for that. I'll pass over to Paul Fleming to answer some of the detail of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, repeat thanks, Bailey McPherson, for your comments and indeed your question. Yeah, so in relation to the closing of the poverty related to the timming gap, a couple of comments, Bailey McPherson, would be to note in regards to literacy, for our young people living in quintile one, so the twenty percent most deprived areas, those in Dundee are attaining higher than the equivalent across the country, as is five point three. And I think importantly as well, those who live in the most affluent areas, which you referenced to is very important, that they attain are also attaining higher as well, because that's sometimes the gap can be misleading, because the gap can be smaller, but it's because our young people in the most affluent areas are not doing as well as they could be, which is one of the reasons why the gap can look smaller in certain areas. So we are very conscious that whilst our young people living in quintile one have, are back on that trajectory of improvement and is higher than the national average and indeed in quintile five as well in literacy, we're very conscious that work needs to take place. So this is an absolute focus for us through a number of different areas, Bailey McPherson. So a couple would be the targeted work as a result of Strategic Equity Fund, the Pupil Equity Fund, to make sure those living in quintile one continue to improve but at a faster pace, so that that stubborn gap that you talk about does close. That gap is less than it is nationally, which is a positive story. But equally, we wanted to improve further, but also importantly through every Dundee Learner Matters strategy, which has a number of facets to it. One of the is about addressing contextual barriers at school level, which we should help improve attainment school by school, but importantly about sharing expertise and sharing practices of what works in addressing this closing the gap agenda. So it is a significant focus for us and we continue to work in this area and it is high on the priority list of each individual nursery and school, Bailey McPherson.
I'm very grateful. That was a pretty detailed response and I'm grateful for that. And I appreciate the point about, you know, us versus the national picture. Although I would say the gap, the positive gap, if you like, between Dundee and the national picture in sixteen, seventeen was actually better than it is at the moment. But I nonetheless accept the point that, you know, a lot of effort is being made here. It's vitally important. I think that all our pupils have, you know, every chance to achieve in both literacy and numeracy. And I'm grateful for that detailed response from Mr Fleming. Thank you.
No, thank you for those comments, Bailey McPherson. Bailey Keenan.
Thanks, convener. I think the twenty-one, twenty-two will reflect the first year of cuts to the attainment challenge fund. And I'm looking at page twenty-five of the report and making comparison between S three, third level plus, between two thousand sixteen, seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and all the way down, reading minus seven, writing minus six, listening and talking minus five, literacy minus five and numeracy minus three. And, you know, wondering why we're seeing that level of difference when we're, when we've, you know, we're trying to close the attainment gap. And I only, and I see between the Scottish average on an earlier page of the report, that between the Scottish average and literacy in the same year group, that they're down one point, but we're down five. So, you know, it didn't appear that we've closed the attainment gap in any way. And, you know, I had the assurance with officers in the recent cut, that cut another one point two million pound out of the attainment challenge, that a lot of things were embedded in the lessons. So why we're seeing this level of drop in that area between two thousand sixteen, seventeen and two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two?
Okay, thank you for that question, Bailey Keenan. I'm just going to pass over to Mrs May.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks again for the question, Bailey Keenan, and thank you, convener. I'm going to ask Mr Fleming to come in and pick up that question.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs May. Thanks, Bailey Keenan, for an important question. And it is challenging, I suppose, to give a short answer and I welcome to have a fuller conversation about it. I would reference paragraph four point six, which quotes the kind of official publication from the Scottish government, which does ask you to draw some caution when comparing data over time. It does make it really challenging to do that because of the impact of the pandemic. And a couple of things. One is we have undertaken significant work, particularly in the early years and primary around moderation, so quality assurance and moderation of a level to really have confidence in the data. And that is a specific focus for us. I see Jodie Barclay in her EIS capacity on the call, but Jodie is deputy of the pedagogy team is leading along with schools some particular work to ensure the moderation, to make sure that the data is as accurate as possible. I know from a short line working group I'm in just now with ADEZ colleagues that the other local authorities have some questions around the validity of their S three data. One of the reasons for that being over the last couple of years during COVID, when the data was not collected at S three, there was no need to engage in that moderation of a level and practitioners were engaged in moderation around the new assessments because of the stopping of exams. There's a little bit there too. But also we are seeing the impact of the pandemic as well on some of our broad general education in the senior, in the senior school, Bailey Keenan, particularly as a result of transition. So you will note in the conclusions and next step that a significant focus for us in our improvement priority, particularly through the invitation to ADEZ and members of Education Scotland around collaborative improvement, is to step up the piece of improvement and to make sure that we are getting it right for those young people in the secondary schools. There's many parts to this. We are aware that there are some concerns about the data in our BGE and secondary and we have plans in place to address that.
Okay, Bailey Keenan, have you had a response for a question?
But I'm still, I've still got great concerns about, I've no man to pay attention to the data. I mean, it seems blatantly obvious that we are nowhere we should be. And, you know, I suppose should we be making representation to the government about the attainment challenge fund being cut? And if it gets cut, you know, if we see a drop off next year, then, you know, that will certainly reflect poorly. But, you know, we'll have let people down by that stage. So what, you know, what, what would do to monitor lessons that can clearly see that difference? And I'm getting reports from parents that in a number, that a couple of schools and secondaries in that fives, the results in maths are appalling.
Okay, well, I think it'd be helpful if you have that information to pass it to officers.
I have not.
And that's fine. I'm sure they'll get back to you in due course. Mr Fleming, is there anything you wish to add to what's been said?
I would just add, convener, in response to Billy Keenan, that we've arranged a meeting to follow up Billy Keenan's specific concerns about individual skills and happy to do so.
Okay, thank you, Mr Fleming. Bailey Scott.
Thanks, convener. And I think Mr Fleming may have partly answered my question in response to Bailey Keenan about the plans that are in place for dealing with issues in S three. But I wondered if you could explain to the committee why there's a big drop off in achievement across all measures at the fourth level in S three.
Okay, I'll just pass it to Mr Fleming.
Okay, thank you, Bailey Scott. And in fourth level at S three, I'm not sure, is this related to the individual aspects of literacy? Because when we look at literacy overall and numeracy overall, which is quite strange considering Bailey Keenan's well made points about third level, that we're actually seeing an increase in attainment at fourth level for both literacy and numeracy.
I'm looking at page thirteen in appendix one, the table there. And on the all the, well, on the numeracy on the fourth level, there's a huge drop off in the attainment at that stage.
Sorry, which page, Bailey Scott?
That's page, sorry, it's page twenty-five of the committee papers. And it's in the numeracy section of S three at fourth level, where it drops quite dramatically from third level to fourth level.
Okay, in literacy and in numeracy at S three, the expected level for young people to attain is third level by the end of S three. Some young people can achieve fourth level. And this is not a requirement or indeed an expected level, it's an additional as well. So the key thing is to make sure that young people attain third level and that's a drop we see. So it's not about the drop off from third into fourth, but looking at fourth as a standalone, Bailey Scott. So looking at the journey of fourth level from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, where there's been an increase from then until now. So not all young people would take fourth level nor would we expect them to take fourth level. It's an additional, should young people attain third level really well earlier in S three, Bailey Scott.
All right. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
No, thank you for that. With that, I don't see any other questions, so happy for this report to be agreed. Seeing everybody nodding and I think that's the business for children and family. Thank you very much. Thank you, convener. The next committee is the City Development Committee. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City Development Committee. Over to you, Elaine. Just get started, please.
Thank you, convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Anyone any declarations? I don't see any, so just move on, please.
There being no declarations.
Oh, sorry, apologies. Councillor Creighton, you're just popped up there. Apologies. Michael.
There you go. Sorry, I was, I don't know how I got taken off meeting. No, on item six, a close family member has written the report, so I won't take part in that.
Okay, thank you for that. Be noted. Thank you. Okay, just move on, Elaine. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. Item two, Radio One's Big Weekend, DCC Host Duty Works Revenue Funds.
Thank you. Plans for the Big Weekend, as we all know, are proceeding well with transport, environmental and safety off to the fore. As across council, project group continues to plan for the event. This report, sorry, agenda note seeks approval to delegate authority to the executive director of City Development and the executive director of Corporate Services to award contracts associated with the host of the Radio One Big Weekend event in May twenty twenty-three. Councillor Malone.
Thank you, convener. It's not necessarily a question about the procurement process itself, but obviously the big, I mean, the event is going to be huge, it's going to be popular and it's going to be good for the city. I'm, I'm, I just wonder if I've had discussions with the organisers, has included staff, they will be working there, and whether or not there's a requirement by the organisers to pay the living wage to people who are working on that project, because these projects are often notorious for using volunteers. So I'm just wondering if there'd been any discussion around that. I'm sure there has been and I'm sure that the answer I get back will be to reassure me, but I would just like to get that reassurance anyway.
Yeah, Mr Hamilton, would you like to come back on this one, please?
Thank you, convener. Yes, I can confirm that that's a matter that is considered by one of the subgroups in close liaison with the organiser to make sure that fair work is part of the organising of the whole event.
Thank you for that.
You okay, Charlie? Yeah, thanks very much for that. We have councillor Alexander. See, you've got your hand up.
Thanks very much, convener. I suppose it follows on from the previous question. I now know the answer, but I think it's probably beneficially running publicly in June committee as well. So I'm recently in contact with the department in relation to the Big Weekend and other opportunities for the wider city. So there is of course the direct financial and economic boost that it can provide. There's the question that Charlie has asked, which again is something that you and I have discussed previously. But beyond that, there are other opportunities. So I suppose to make sure it's a question, can Gregor, Mr Hamilton, confirm that we are in active discussions with the BBC in terms of also obtaining potential educational opportunities and additional tickets that potentially could be distributed through social work, education to care experienced young people or people that are living in some of our deprived communities as another added benefit to bringing the Big Weekend to the city. Thanks.
Mr Hamilton.
Convener, yes, I can confirm that those discussions are taking place with the organisers and further details will be provided in due course.
Thanks very much for that. You okay with that, John? Yeah, thank you. I think it's actually worth saying, it's actually a welcomed event. It'll be massive for the city, but actually here and it's a fair work and also the interaction with the communities is actually more than welcome. We'll take that. It's agreed. Yep, I think it is. Thank you very much. Can we move on, Elaine, please?
Item three, City Development Service Plan, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four progress report. This is for approval.
City Development Service Plan, a few updates, committee on challenges facing the service and despite the impact of the economic recovery post COVID nineteen, I should say, is driving towards its work with several notable successes. And I have to say, I have to thank everyone within the department for making this a success in these difficult times. And I think it's worth highlighting the fact that we've launched the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan to see these new interventions to restore confidence in the city centre and increase food fall. Over twenty million pounds of external funding secured from the Scottish government and UK government for active travel, low carbon transport and clean air. And I think it's also worth noting the fact that the work done by the employability through Discover Work partnership and helping to get eleven thousand people back into work in positive destinations through initiatives like our adult employability academies, which have been very successful. I see Bailey McPherson, I think you were first.
Thanks indeed, convener. You mentioned the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan. And with that in mind, we've got a question about the information on page nineteen. It indicates that the public wifi network at Dundee waterfront was launched, as we know, towards the end of twenty twenty-one. And the work on the five G testbed at Slister Gardens was completed in April twenty-two. I had a lot of exchanges in earlier times with officers about the whole issue of public wifi for the waterfront, but also for the wider city centre. And I was just really wondering if officers can update me as to where we go now in relation to having a public wifi offering for the wider city centre other than, you know, what's already there at the waterfront.
Good. Thank you. Mr Presswood, do you want to answer that one?
Many thanks. And I confirm that Bailey McPherson has been championing this for a period of time. The original plans were to allow the pilot scheme within the waterfront to extend into the city centre as far as possible. I think rather than me trying to, to, to second guess the technology that has existed and what's been installed as if I provide a separate briefing to the committee, just detailing where we are in terms of that journey. And I think just one comment as an aside, I think the pressure that we had in the noughties and the, the, the two thousand and tens, whatever you call that decade, is probably diminishing for free public wifi because data is now so available and so cheap that it's perhaps less of an issue than it was ten years ago or so. But if acceptable, I'll provide a separate briefing note on that, convener.
Yes, thank you. Bailey McPherson, would that be?
Yes, thanks for that and I'm grateful for the briefing. I take the point, you know, that the dynamics are slightly different than they were and certainly back in the noughties, but, but nonetheless. But nonetheless, free public wifi does have advantages. Not only is it an offering for our own residents, but visitors to the city, but also provides a potential advertising space for, you know, to promote the attractions that we'll have in the city to visitors to the city. So it would be good nonetheless to see it rolled out further. Now, I look forward to the further update from Mr Presswood.
Thank you. Take on board your comments, sir. Thanks. Councilor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr convener. I did find it a little bit ironic. On page seven, it indicates priorities to have a key role and play to play in bringing new events, attractions to Camperdown Park. We will look to secure investment and create jobs without damage to the natural environment of the park when only last a couple of months ago, or last month, we, the administration took the decision to remove the Flower and Food Festival. But nevertheless, both one-off events like Radio One, Big Weekend are very welcome. And I'm quite looking forward to the event in the city and indeed among Ward. Can I ask officers what has been done to get repeat and returning events to Camperdown? So that we have more annual events and perhaps not less one-off events.
Thank you. Mr Hamilton, probably you're the best one for this one.
Thank you, convener. I think there are actually a programme of events that take place regularly within Camperdown Park. Now, none of them are of the scale of the Big Weekend or indeed the Flower and Food Festival. But we work closely with colleagues in neighbourhood services to ensure that Camperdown Parks and other open spaces across the city are used for a diverse range of purposes. We have also been talking about bringing forward a strategy for events in the city later this calendar year to committee for approval that will set out our approach to ensuring that the legacy of the Big Weekend and other events that have taken place in the city is capitalised on. And that we continue to see a range of activities across a range of spaces that generate footfall and heighten the profile and the prominence of all the good work that's going on in the city. So there will be further reports later this calendar year that will talk about these matters.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I think it's worth noting, the work the team put into bringing events to the city is quite intense a lot of times. And they do a fantastic job. Councilor Coleman, would you like to come back?
That's fine. Thank you. Look forward to reading the report when it comes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Duncan, please.
Thanks, convener. Just got a question around page 22 of the reports about the percentage of children walking or cycling to school. It currently is stated as sitting at 49% and the target is 60%. Therefore, the trend is reported as downward. I'm just wondering, what was the figure over time? For example, five years ago? And should we not as an authority be trying to reach that target? I'm only asking because, I mean, school street zones are all very welcome, but they can't be achieved for practical reasons at all schools. So I'm really wondering, what other steps can we take to encourage children to walk or cycle to school?
Yeah, thanks for that. But I think we're doing much within the city, as you know, with regards to active travel, with the support from the Scottish Government, with funding from them, with many, many projects. But I'll bring in Mr McNorton, if he's on the call, can't see. Do you need him?
Yeah, thank you very much, convener, and thank you for the question. It is very much a multifaceted approach to increasing cycling rates up and other forms of sustainable transport as well, like public transport, specifically to do with active travel. We are investing in the capital infrastructure to improve routes, particularly around community, sand, schools and other facilities and attractions. We're also undertaking a number of measures with schools as well, things like bike ability training. There's been bike programmes for disadvantaged children and a range of other activities in between to try and promote these up in addition to some of the other schemes that you've mentioned, like school streets. I don't have the previous figures for the last five years. The year prior was a minor increase up that we achieved in 2022. But again, we are still targeting further increases in children travelling to school by active means.
Councilor Duncan, you have a look.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks for that. And I mean, I do take the point that a great deal has been done, but that's rather emphasises why I'm concerned that the trend isn't better than it appears to be.
Yeah, watch this space. I'm sure we'll make, go in the positive direction very, very soon. Bailey Scott, please.
Sorry, convener, I couldn't get my mute button off, sorry. My question is about areas for improvement in design and property on page 13 regarding rationalisation of property. During the budget setting process, I had discussions with officers about the possibility of relocating staff to City Square, because we do have a lot of empty desks. So getting staff to City Square and then leasing out the office space that was freed up. But I was told that wasn't possible because there's still a £100,000 of saving to be realised in this current financial year in respect of property rationalisation. So two questions. My first one is, are we going to be able to realise that saving before the end of the financial year? And my second question is that many organisations and businesses are now in a steady state when it comes to terms of their hybrid working and they're able to plan accordingly going forward. So I just wondered what the position is with the council and when we'll be able to plan for office requirement and IT equipment going forward. So we'll be able to then to have a good understanding of the office space that we need and dispose of those that we don't.
Yeah, thank you. Mr Presswood?
Many thanks, Bailey Scott. So in terms of the two questions, the £100,000 saving from last year, that is being picked up by property rationalisation phase three. And I think members are aware of the first two phases that have delivered a significant reduction in the council's property portfolio. Having said that, it does take some years from the concept to actually getting the implementation. Hence, the fact that that is a residual saving, saving still to be delivered. In terms of the second part of Bailey Scott's question, I think it is an important point. And members will recognise that across the world, there's a debate around the extent to which staff required to return to the office, the extent to which management seeks to encourage them to come back into the office and the extent to which individual members of staff are willing to come back into the office. I think it's fair to say that the situation across the public sector in Scotland is still in flux. But we are seeing staff continuing to return to the office because there's no doubt that, at least on a part-time basis, there are considerable benefits in bringing staff together in terms of team building, bringing new members of staff into the team, training and supporting them. And I think that's why the city council is still on a journey to settle on the numbers of staff that will be in the offices at any one point in time. And we have done some detailed work in terms of trying to understand what the model looks like in the future. And we have reviewed each of the core officers within the council's property portfolio to establish the extent to which we can dispose of property. But also crucially, how much property, how much office property we require in the future. And it's sad to say that the majority of council staff do require to attend their place of work every day. And it is just the office staff that we're talking about in the confines of this exercise. And so I think the fundamental point that Bailey Scott is making is absolutely correct. We can do with less office accommodation. And we will look to see which office accommodation we can pull out of and which can be let crucially to other agencies or the private sector. And so that's an exercise that's ongoing. We are actively promoting council office accommodation, particularly to other public sector partners. And as soon as those discussions come to any fruition, we will of course bring back a report to members for discussion.
Yeah, thank you for that. Bailey Scott, that's your question?
That's a very detailed.
Okay, thank you. I think you broke up there, Derek, but thanks very much. Okay, thank you. Councilor Rome, please.
Thank you, convener. I just want to echo a point that you made earlier regarding the employability team and employability pathway. I'd like to put on record my thanks for the wider Discovery Work, Discover Work Partnership for the role that they do. It's a really difficult job and they do a lot of work, really in-depth work with people that needs their confidence boosted, they need to really get basic skills under their belt. And I know from personal experience of having attended the academies, the graduations. I know yourself, you have attended them as well, convener, on many occasions, that both the participants and the officers involved get a lot out of this particular programme. So I'd like to recall my thanks for that. And just a question as well to officers. If we could have a members briefing regarding the work of the service, because it is quite a complex service and quite an in-depth intervention, I think it'd be useful for all members, it's just a reminder of the work that they do.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I agree with your comments. And Mr Presswood, may take on board what's just been said.
I certainly will, convener. Many thanks. And perhaps I can just say a word about the partnership itself. And other members have seen partnerships in action a number of, all the time within the city. And I think it is a very positive way of taking forward shared problem areas. I think some members take the view that the council perhaps ends up carrying too much of the weight in some partnerships. But Discover Work Partnership genuinely is a multi-agency partnership with each partner bringing resources to the table. So it's chaired by the college, the council provides some secretary at Department of Work and Pensions, Sir Cons one member staff in, the college, Sir Cons one member staff in. Skills Development Scotland are the deputy chair and bring resources to the table. So it really is an effort by all the employability partners to help drive change and to see the improvement in results that Councilor Rome has alluded to.
Well, thank you. I absolutely agree. The work is put into this, as Councilor Rome says, sometimes goes under the radar. And I think it's really good to see the work being done and the partnership works extremely well within the city. So thanks for that. Council Alexander, please.
Thanks very much, convener. Yeah, just to, I suppose, provide a little bit of a compliment as well to the wider department. And of course, yourself and the deputy convener. I think there's a number of highlights within the report that are worth mentioning. And also some that aren't contained within the report that are worth mentioning as well. And when we consider the expanse of interventions that city development are involved in, it's fairly significant for a relatively small team. So there is much to be celebrated for all of the efforts from so many members of staff within your service. Councilor Row mentioned the employability pathway. And again, I'm pleased to see that the stats are reflecting some of that focused intervention and focused work, which I know has been a topic of discussion at several forums, including Robin coming along to the Fairness Commission, something that the Fairness Commission, working on the poverty agenda in the city, were very interested on. And again, thanks for that. But it's also worth reflecting that whilst we often comment about how times are difficult and tough, and there's lots of challenges on the horizon, which there are, there's also some things to celebrate. And, you know, I was looking back through this report and thinking about the last 12 months. For example, Dundee has been referenced as a top 20 destination for foreign direct investment for the first time ever. I think that's a significant milestone and shows the ambitious plans that we've got at play and how that's resonating beyond the shores of just Dundee. Named as one of the 122 global cities A rating based upon the actions on our climate change agenda. And again, only Dundee and Edinburgh referenced in the whole of Scotland. So again, credit where credit is due. We've launched the Climate Change Fund, the first of its kind anywhere in the UK, led by a council. We're collaborating with SSEN and a wider consortium on the heat and energy efficiency strategy. So again, I think there's much to be proud of in terms of what city development are currently taking forward and recognising the progress that we're making now. I'd be the first to recognise that we all want to make more progress quicker. But I think it's worth putting on record our thanks and thanks also again to yourself and to the deputy convener for the work that you do in taking forward the service. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. I appreciate the comments. And I think as I said at the beginning, it's really down to the hard work of all the teams within City Development. And I think they do a fantastic job in meeting all these challenges that are four of us in front of us, sorry. But I see that. No more questions and take this report as agreed. Thank you. Next, Elaine, please.
Thank you. Item four, City Centre Strategic Investment Plan at City Lights and City Nights. You have the report before you.
Thank you. This report is the next in a series of actions from the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan, following on from the Union Street project, recently announced and improvements to the Commercial Street, Murraygate junctions. Seeks approval for a range of initiatives to provide vibrancy and activity in the city centre. And it's also a further demonstration of the council's commitment to delivering an ambitious setup of a plan where we will deliver projects, enhance the appearance of the city centre, as well as activities to support the evening economy. Councilor Short, please.
Hey, thank you, convener. I guess I have a double part to my question. And the first part is, do we have an indication of the buildings that you're looking to illuminate? And the second part of the question is, and this is a bit of a double edged sword. There's a big cry almost always for safe spaces. And it's brilliant to see that buildings are going to be eliminated. But the balance of that is obviously climate change and making sure that we're not pushing too much out in the way of energy with regards to that. So where and are we going to be looking at the impact that it'll have on the environment? Please.
No, thanks for the question. Mr Presswood, please.
Many thanks, convener and Councilor Short. And the second point is perhaps the easiest. And I can give the example of MacManus, where I think members are aware that we're committed to doing that previously. It's a dated and unreliable system. And we intend replacing it with a modern LED system. The impact of that capital investment will both be to improve the lighting of the building, but also to reduce energy costs and climate, carbon emissions by 50%. And so appreciate you asking us for that clarity. We didn't have that in time to include it within the report. But we found that out over the past week from the street lighting manager. And in terms of the type of further lighting that we are currently exploring, we didn't want to put a list within the report because obviously there are many issues which may result in us not being able to take something forward. And that could be permission from the building owners, technical issues in terms of how the lighting could be installed or indeed cost, if there's a rolling programme of these things, it may not be possible to do all of the ones that we're looking at. But I think to give you four of the leading options, if that's okay, convener. And the first one is the Stipple Church. I know that members have raised this on a number of occasions. I'd desire to see that illuminated again. And the second one would be some of the very popular public art within the city centre. And I have had complaints from members about the fact that the lighting for the dragon has ceased to function. And obviously, that would be a priority to repair and upgrade that. In the future, I think one of our most popular pieces of public art is of course Desperate Anne and Desperate Dan and Mini the Minks. So lighting that up might be a priority. And then finally, St Paul's Cathedral as well, subject to the approval of the church. So those are the type of thing we're looking at. And that's not to guarantee that all four of them could be delivered, but we would obviously be delighted if they could.
Thank you very much for that. Councilor Short?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Sorry, Billy McPherson just came in there.
Yeah, just a brief comment. And I think, you know, we've debated before the concerns I think we all have about ensuring that our city centre remains vibrant. There are massive challenges facing town and city centres right across the country, given the changing way we shop frankly. And to be honest, gone are the days of the GL Wilsons and the DM Brums. For those of you who are old enough to remember these Dundee iconic businesses. The point I make, however, is that our group's happy to support what's coming forward today. And obviously, we want to make as best possible use of, for example, the City Centre Recovery Fund. We feel that the more substantial thing actually is the pilot in relation to the evening economy. Because we think that is something that we could do a whole lot more on going forward. I would be remiss if I didn't mention what we had in our budget proposal, which was to really do a whole lot more in relation to exterior improvements, as is being done in Union Street. But I reiterate our concerns about the issues, particularly, I feel, in relation to Murraygate and Reform Street, but particularly Murraygate in relation to the loss of key businesses. As you know, HSBC, M&amp;S and just round the corner into the Colgate Farn Foods as well. And I think I would really like to see this as just part of an ongoing drive, as I know it is. Because, you know, I was very positive about the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan. I think we all were. I think that was a very well-written report and shows some, if you like, blue skies thinking from officers in relation to where we go, in relation to making our city centre vibrant into the future. So we're welcoming this report. I think we would all agree it's part of an ongoing commitment to our city centre, one that is really vital if it is to thrive into the future. Thank you, convener.
Well, thank you for your comments. I think this, I agree a total hundred percent with the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan is very much my thinking. And I think it's a document which has been well presented and well received by many within the city and out with the city. And I think that's the important part. And also the acknowledgement of the good work being done by the City Centre manager and our team as well with regards to bringing this forward. Because I think I agree with you, the evening economy proposal within here is actually one that's really most welcome amongst other ones within the report as well, which will take slightly longer. But I think I'll have to recognise that the funding model from the Scottish Government to actually support these type of initiatives as well. But I think we'll have to recognize that the funding model from the Scottish Government to actually support these type of initiatives is really going to be welcome. Counsel Alexander, please.
Thanks very much, convener. Yeah, just very briefly, I think we're often, or the council is often criticised for the pace at which it takes forwards some of these initiatives and proposals. And I think it's worth recognizing how many things have already come forward since the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan came forward to committee in a draft form on the 31st of October. We've had a report on the City Centre Commercial Waste Pilot, which formed part of the recommendations. We've had a report on City Centre Shopfront Improvements in December. And we then had the Commercial Street Enhancement Proposals in January. And again, here we are a little over a month since that report, bringing forward some further work. So I think it's really impressive, actually, the pace at which some of these proposals have come forward. And I want to thank the team for that. It would be remiss of me as Chair of the Scottish Cities Alliance not to also welcome this on the back of the report that was formulated and co-produced by the Scottish Cities Alliance and Scottish Government in 2022. And of course, the £6 million City Improvement Fund was a direct request of the Scottish Cities Alliance. And we are benefiting from that ask as part of the joint work on the City Centre Recovery Task Force. So I just wanted to put on record, you know, that from all of our various hats that we wear, we'll continue to push for as much resource and to support the activity within the city centre in any way that we possibly can. And there's more, I think, to come, both from our ambitious city, but also from that national approach to the recovery of our city centre. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel Alexander. Counsel Rome, please.
Now, you can be now. Can I just note before I start, you've done what you frequently do during our meetings, which is take the words out of my mouth before I can say them. Just, no problem, just to, again, welcome Bailey McPherson's comments. I think they're absolutely fair. And I think the focus of the report has to be what the majority report is actually about, which is the early evening economy pilot. And again, to echo your comments, that the City Centre Manager has done an absolute power of work in driving this forward and making this a reality. And I look forward to more details coming forward about what we're actually going to be doing over the spring and summertime. But certainly, you and I, we have some sort of indicative ideas. And I think that we're going to see some really interestingly second things going forward. And certainly, as Counsel Alexander's made clear, we haven't rested on our laurels. Officers done a lot of work and I'm grateful for that work.
Yep, thank you very much for that. And I'm sure the team appreciate the comments. See no other questions, so I'll take this report as agreed. Thank you very much. Next, Elaine, please.
Thank you, convener. Item five, granting of section 18 licence under the Code Protection Act 1949 and amend scheme of delegation for unplanned emergency works on the Dundee foreshore. You have the report before you.
Thank you. I'll just take it as it's read. Bailey Scott, please.
Thanks, convener. I have no issue at all with the powers to issue licences being delegated to the Executive Director of City Development and for it to be reported to committee retrospectively. But whenever there's any activity on the Brody Ferry foreshore, the local members always get lots of questions from residents about what's going on. So at the same time as the Executive Director approves the licence, it would be helpful if the local members could be advised as well so that we're able to answer any questions that might come our way.
Yeah, thank you. I just confirm that. Mr. Presswood, that be okay?
Yes, happy to provide that assurance, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. That'll be enough. That'll be Scott. Yes, okay. So I see no other questions or comments, so I'll take that as agreed as well. Thank you very much. Next one, Elaine, please.
Item six, supply of vehicles on plant. This is for approval.
As I say, it's looking for approval for procurement of planning vehicles used for delivery of frontline services. Any questions or comments? Don't see any, so we'll just take that one as agreed. Thank you very much. Next one, please, Elaine.
Item seven, tenders received by head of sign and property. This is for approval.
Again, seeking approval for ten tenders, total expenditure of £2.2 million. For example, multi-use games arena for Grove, area, sorry, for Grove Academy, upgrading of Cramel Bridge, further phase footpath and cycle wave for Brody Ferry, Morningfeet Act, the travel project amongst others. Counsel Duncan, please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just a quick comment, simply to welcome the forthcoming look at Grove. I know there's been quite demand for it and I'm confident it will be very well used indeed. So glad to see this.
Well, thank you for that and thank you for the comments. Any questions or comments? No more? Nope, I'll just take that as agreed then. Thank you very much. Elaine?
That takes us to the confidential items of the agenda. Can these be dealt with in the usual way?
Just to look for members to agree that's okay to proceed as normal. Don't see any objections. So that's the business for city development. Thank you very much. Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, folks. We'll just crack on.
Thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
See nobody jumping at the keyboard, so we'll take that as a no.
Okay, thank you. There have been no declarations. Takes you on to item two, capital expenditure monitoring. There are two reports before you for noting.
Okay, if you can just clarify which part of the report, whether it's two A or B, when you ask your question or provide your comments. So I'll come to you first, councillor Duncan. Greg? Can't hear you. You're still on mute.
Sorry, I'm not sure if that's a legacy thing from you or not.
Oh, is it? Sorry.
I think I'm sorry about that.
Right. No, that's all right. So in that case, councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. The Camper Down Development Plan next phase delay is alluded to at 5.2.6 on page three. Can I ask what this actually covers in terms of improvements? If officers are confident onsite work will start, onsite will start be achieved by the summer? And if she means so, when would it be completed by?
Okay, thanks for the question. Just looking at officers who will be able to provide you with a response on that. Robin, is it best to come to yourself or?
Chair, I think Neil Martin's still on the call. I think Neil will pick that one up if that's okay.
Yeah, Neil.
Thanks, convener. Councillor Coleman, could you possibly repeat that question? My comments went down halfway through when you were speaking. Thanks.
Yes, no problem. At page, oh, page three, 5.2.6, the Camper Down Development Plan next phase is alluded to. I was just wanting to ask what actually covers in terms of improvements. And if officers are confident onsite start will be achieved this summer, and if so, when would it be completed by?
Councillor Coleman, I actually don't have the full detail of that. Would it be okay if I could speak to the appropriate officers tomorrow? And I'll come back with a detailed briefing on that.
Got Paul with his hands up.
Sorry, convener.
No, it's all right. No worries. Paul, do you want to come in? Can you offer any clarification on top of Neil coming back?
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thanks for the question. It's just to say that that particular project is within the section of the plan that's managed by neighbourhood services. It's in the parts and open spaces. So possibly it would be, the question may be better directed rather than city development.
Thank you, Paul. I'm struggling between my screens, so that's a helpful clarification. Elaine, do you have the answer or do you want to come back after the meeting? But come to you first.
Thank you very much, convener. I'm happy to speak to Tony Boyle about that tomorrow. And we're happy to give councillor Coleman a full update once I've had a chance to speak with Tony.
Perfect. Thanks very much. Okay, we'll have that circulated, Daniel. That, okay?
Thank you.
No worries. Thanks very much. Any other questions on two A and B? No? Okay. Can that be agreed? Thank you very much. We'll move on. Willie?
Thank you very much. Item three then, before his review and monitoring. And again, these are presented as three A and three B. You're asked to read the recommendations from both these reports.
And you'll recall these are the items that were carried forward or one of them from the previous meeting. So I'll just go straight to questions. Councillor Creighton?
Pardon me. Thank you, convener. On page 41, there's a forecast overspend for winter maintenance. My question is really towards, it was a mild winter this year and it's a significant overspend. So I'm just wondering if the budget is sufficient, given the overspend from this year, bear in mind it was a mild winter.
Thanks for the question. I'll come to officers in just a moment. I think it's always one of these things when we consider winter maintenance, what we mean by mild. So I think often when we talk about mild, we talk about no disruption owing to snow and freezing rainfall, et cetera. But it doesn't mean there's not been freezing conditions. And we have had some freezing conditions over the course of the last few months. But Ewan, can I perhaps come to you in the first instance to provide a bit of clarity on that question, please?
Yeah, thank you very much, convener. The winter season has been above average in terms of severity. And that's on a number of different measures, predominantly on salt use, where we've been above our average. The latter part of 2022 did feature a number of consecutively cold days where some of the road surface temperatures went as low as minus 9.5. And again, from a forecasting point of view, it hasn't ended yet. The weather forecast temperatures for the end of this week go down to road temperatures of forecast for Friday of about minus six and a half. So again, it's a moving feast as we go, but it's from a cold weather perspective and salt use particularly to do with the rainfall that we had at the tail end of last year. It has been quite a significant winter season for the team.
Thanks. And I suppose just to add to that, in terms of the nature of the spend as well, and this is obvious. So apologies, I'm not being condescending in any way, but it fluctuates year on year. And of course, what we don't want to be in a position is that we set aside a budget that then leaves us with a surplus at the end of the year because an actual fact that could be used for other purposes. So best guesstimate is probably where we're at at this point in time. And obviously, that's informed by the experience over the years previous. But hopefully, that answers your question, Michael.
Thank you, convener.
I see no other questions at this point. Can I take these two items as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, thank you, convener. Item four then, for his corporate services service plan. This is for noting.
Again, these service plans are really helpful just to kind of showcase and also put a spotlight on the areas where both we're making progress and where we need to make more progress. And I think this, again, is a plan that highlights a number of areas of good progress in the context of that significant additional demand over COVID-19 and beyond. And obviously, some of those services in terms of the response to cost of living crisis as well. The update in 2022, 23 reflects continued progress in the day-to-day provision of core services, delivery of new initiatives as well, which is really important, and the development of new policy. There's key aspects highlighted in there, which you'll all be live to from the approval of the medium term financial strategy, the development of community wealth building and the implementation of FuelWell 3, which we all know has been really critical and very well received within our communities as well. I'll just go to questions. So councillor McPherson, Bailey McPherson, should I say?
Thanks, convener. My question's regarding the information on page 81 in relation to developing a long-term plan for Tayside Scientific Services. I noticed that the progress is sitting at 50%. Now, I think we're all well aware of the challenges that have faced scientific services over quite now a sustained period. And I'm just really wondering how quickly we expect to see that long-term plan really in place, completed, if you like. Because we obviously all want to see a positive future for Tayside Scientific Services.
Thanks for the question. And yeah, we're all live to that, both being a challenge and an opportunity and making sure that the service is on an even keel going forward as well. So I'll bring in the chief executive, Greg.
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. So work is underway with national agencies, along with the three other local authorities that have labs included in them, which are Glasgow, Aberdeen and Edinburgh. As of yet, there's no fixed time scales, but what I can give an assurance to you is that we are looking at all of the options available around the sustainability of scientific services. And I'll ensure that members are kept updated once I have further information around time scales and progress.
I'm grateful for that. Thanks, indeed, Mr. Coleman.
Okay, thanks, Fraser. Any other questions on the side? No? Can we take this as agreed, please? Thank you very much. We'll move on. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Takes you on to item five, risk management annual report. You're asking you the recommendations.
Again, hopefully, this is self-explanatory and is part of the annual reporting mechanism. So I will come to the questions. So who was fastest finger? I think it was Bailey McPherson.
Yes, more a comment than a question. Just very briefly, you'll recall that we, and I'm glad to say unanimously, if you like, agreed to support the call for a pause with regard to the implementation of a national care service. I know we don't all necessarily agree on the long-term position on a national care service. My party has strongly opposed its creation throughout. However, I thought it was very interesting to read the risks and the significant risks that are impacted, that are highlighted on page 116. And it just goes to show if it ever, and I have to say, I think we've slightly led the way as a council because I now see calls right across the board for a pause in the national care service. And obviously, Scottish Government has done a sort of slight agreement with that for a pause for a short period. It does, however, not half highlight the very significant areas of risk. And obviously, if this ever goes any further, these are all going to have to be addressed, convener. Thank you.
Thanks for that comment. And I would always agree that we are ahead of the curve as a council and as a city. So it's always pleasing when that occurs. Just to say, I think clearly there are numerous conversations in that regard. And I'm involved in some of them through COSLA as well. And we all want to make sure, irrespective of your view on whether or not it's a good thing, which clearly my party, and I believe that it is a good thing, is making sure that the implementation and the way in which we deliver it reflects the shared ambitions between local government, the people that we represent, and of course, national government as a policy and a manifesto commitment which will be delivered. So happy to take your points on board and continue to have those conversations with counterparts locally and nationally. Thanks very much. I'll move on to Bailey Keenan next.
Yeah, I think it's a fairly similar question because it is in relation to national care service and the range of risks that are there. Because it's really important that, I believe it's really important that council come out in the best and the strongest financial position, should the Scottish Government decide to take all these things away. Because we'll have shared services where, you know, we'll have a potential director of finance or a head of finance whose role might be shared or a HR position where the roles may be shared. And we will need that employee as well as the other organisations. So I think it's rightly important that we start to unpick some of these things and highlight them to government, that that risks there. So I'm wondering how that work at COSLA has been filtered back through. So as we've got an understanding that we're addressing these risks and starting to mitigate against the effects of them.
Thanks for the question. I'll come to officers first and then I'll provide a dissent comment. Can I maybe come to Greg in the first instance, chief executive?
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks, Bailey Keenan. So with regard to the question, at this moment in time, the construct of the national care service is such that we would not know what services, from a shared service perspective, like finance, HR, legal, fleet and assets, would form part of it. That's something that we're still exploring. And when we're in a position to have more information and clarity around how that almost separation of assets, if indeed that is needed, were to happen, we would have to come back to committee to advise. And at the moment, I know that COSLA is doing work on the national care service and I'm happy to look into that further and provide at an appropriate time elected members and indeed as appropriate committee with an update once we've got more information on the points that you've raised.
Thanks, Greg. And yeah, and just to add to that, obviously, I'm involved in some of those conversations and COSLA spokespeople are also actively engaged in the conversation. And there's a wider interest, of course. And I know that, Kevin, you'll be reflecting on the fact that your party is also firmly behind in support of a national care service as well. So we want to make sure that we get this right and that ultimately it delivers the outcomes that we all want to see. The one thing I would say is our experience of partnership working is one that I'm very proud of. And whatever form it takes, we'll be making sure that we lean into that, support it and hopefully deliver on those collective aspirations. But I know through individual conversations as well, I'll continue to work with cabinet colleagues to feed in the Dundee perspective, I suppose, as well as feeding that through COSLA. So just to give you that reassurance.
Just to say that the Labour Party were looking for a different version than your own, of course.
A different flavour of the same thing. I think your policy document was called Towards the National Care Service. So we can agree to disagree, but I think the essence of what we're saying is that we want to get this right and deliver the outcomes that we all want to see in terms of the best possible, you know, health outcomes for individuals in the city. So thanks very much for the question. I see no other questions on this item, so can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. We'll move on. Willie?
Okay, thank you. Item six, then, is Treasury Policy Statement, and this is for approval.
Again, fairly self-explanatory. Any particular question? Again, fairly self-explanatory. Any particular questions, comments on this? No. Okay, can I take this as agreed? Thanks very much. Willie?
Okay, thank you. Item seven is Treasury Management Strategy. You're asked to give the recommendations.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Here's me just talking to myself as I often do. Thanks for that. Any questions on the site? No? Okay, can I take this as agreed, please? Thank you very much.
Yeah, there are many. Item eight, is a renewal of Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. You're asked to agree the proposals.
I just ask, is this agreed? Take that as a yes. Thank you very much. That is all the business. Thank you for your attendance. Have a glorious week and we shall see you very soon. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.